The meeting of May 6, 2019 to order. Councilmember Lenore, we leave you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Resendez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Present.
Mayor Velasquez?
Here.
Councilmember Spencer?
Here.
Councilmember Lenore?
Present.
City manager Avera?
Present.
City attorney Epperson?
Here.
Chief of police Westrick?
Here.
The amended agenda for the City of Hollister City Council regular meeting of May 6, 2019, was posted on the bulletin board on May 2, 2019, at 11:25 a.m. per Government Code Section 54954.2.
Thank you very much. City attorney, will you please report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council went into closed session to discuss item number one, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 regarding development of 400 block of San Benito Street in Hollister, California. The city council discussed that item in closed session. A motion was made by Councilmember Spencer and seconded by Councilmember Lenore to authorize Vice Mayor Richmond and staff to search for outside legal counsel to assist the city council in handling the appeal of the planning commission's decision regarding development of the 400 block of San Benito Street in Hollister, California. That motion was adopted unanimously and the city council adjourned from closed session at 6:16 p.m.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have four proclamations. Samantha Slikis Day, Older Americans Month, and Buddy Poppy Days, and also Water Awareness Month. Samantha? This is very special. Samantha put on an incredible presentation about a month ago. And, you know, so often, I'm so impressed with our young people, but this presentation, the whole event, just blew, I know myself and several of the council members that were there, and what, 100, 200 people that were there?
About 200.
So, very impressive, and we are so proud to have May 6 named after you, Samantha Slikis Day.
Okay.
Whereas bullying has escalated to an unacceptable proportion across the globe interfering with the emotional, social, and academic development of our youth, now here, now therefore I acknowledge to Velasquez, Mayor of the City of Hollister, to hereby proclaim May 6, 2019, to be Samantha Slikis Day in the City of Hollister for her humanitarian efforts on anti-bullying. Such an awesome job.
So, once again, my name is Samantha Slikis, and I am 14 years old. So, back on March 2, I was able to host a self-awareness for all ages event as my 4-H Emerald Star project at the Veterans Memorial Building. I am happy to report that it was a huge success. With over 200 community members attending, and with the help of other organizations to do presentations and as well as demonstrations, many families were able to take home important information. I've been asked by many people to repeat this type of event, and those organizations that hosted a table were very moved by how well the event went, that they would also like to host a booth once more. So, it is my pleasure to inform you that I am planning for 2020 to be a safety fair. I'm still working out the details, but I would love to have your support and help in making this next event a larger success. Thank you very much for this wonderful honor that I am receiving today. But I would like it to be known that this large event could not have been such a great success as it was without the help of family, friends, and other committed citizens in the San Benito County. It does take one to make a difference, but it takes a whole community to put a good effort into action. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is Older Americans Month. Hi, Mickey. Thank you for being here. Older Americans Month for May 2019. Whereas the City of Hollister includes countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community, and now therefore be it resolved that the City of Hollister does hereby proclaim May 2019 to be the Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community. Thank you for being so involved, Mickey.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, I'm here as a board member of the senior council of Santa Cruz and San Benito County. And I do want to just mention a few things to you about San Benito County, a fact sheet, and that is that the 60-plus population has increased by 30% since 2011 of our senior citizens. 1,732 of the county's 11,296 seniors are eligible for Medi-Cal. The over-60 Medi-Cal eligible population grew 65.6% since 2011 in San Benito County, and eight people per week turned 60 in San Benito County since 2017. So, 42% of all older San Benito County, that would be age 65 and over, do not have enough income to meet their basic needs, according to the UCLA Elder Economic Security Index. So, seniors are the fastest-growing age group in California and in the United States. 65-74 age group is projected to even grow by 20% over the next five years in California. So, I bring to your attention also a picture that is very touching, that says, "We're still here." And that is actually stories of seniors of social isolation. It's an exhibit that is being held at the Santa Cruz Museum of Art and History, in case you want to take a ride over. It started on April the 5th, and it goes to the 22nd of September. I really believe it's something that everybody should take their time to go see and actually read about our senior citizen population. It's growing in San Benito County. It's not just the young people moving into San Benito County. We are just afraid that something, you know, could happen along the way without funding that would really put our seniors in a really bad situation. So, I thank you for the proclamation, and I'm hoping to have your future support for Pauline Valdivia, Jovenes Santano, something that I always fought for while I was on the city council. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mickey.
Our next proclamation is Buddy Poppy Days. It's always a special time of year when I get to see you guys again. Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by government leaders since 1922, and now therefore I acknowledge to Velasquez, Mayor of the City of Hollister, hereby proclaim May 17, 18, and 19, 2019, as Buddy Poppy Days in the City of Hollister, and urge the residents of this community to recognize the merits of this cause. Please contribute a generous donation. Let me show you. Get one of mine here. Get one of these here. To support by obtaining a Buddy Poppy on these days set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead, I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of their gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of their freedoms, which we may continue to enjoy as American citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the proclamation to all of you. My name is Dolly Devossier. I'm president of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary, and I come here almost every year, well, have been every year for quite a while, this, but, you know, this audience there, you're different now, not the same ones that see me over. I was going to say, you don't have to see me over and over again, because after over 31 years as president, I am retiring, and I won't be here anymore, so. Yep, finally got tired of all this, but everything's just fine. But I want to thank you again, because all the donations we pick up goes to all for the veterans' benefits, all veterans, even the National Home and the whole work. So, it's all a good cause, and we're going to be at, my, where is he? Oh, he's up there. Okay, he and I will be at the post office Friday and Saturday. This year, the post did this, and they gave us another day, which is Sunday, but we had never done it before on a Sunday, so I'll probably be asleep on Sunday. But anyway, I want to thank you all in advance, and thank you very much again for the proclamation, and I hope to see you around before too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly. Congratulations. Our last proclamation is Water Awareness Month. There he is. Old buddy.
How you doing?
Good to see you. Whereas California arid and semi-arid climate, its ambitious and evolving economy, its continually growing population, and climate change have combined to make shortages and conflicting demands the norm, and now therefore I acknowledge to Velasquez, Mayor of the City of Hollister, hereby proclaim May 2019 as Water Awareness Month, and urge all citizens, businesses, industries, institutions, and public agencies to review their water use and water systems for water use efficiency, and to contact the Water Resource Association of San Benito County for water-saving ideas and assistance. Thank you so much for everything you do. I appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. I just wanted to tell everybody, you know, we stop this time of year because we're entering into our peak time of year for water usage, because people start turning on their irrigation systems. We use over 50% of residential water use is for outside landscapes, so I urge everybody to call the Water Resources, our number 637-4378. It's a free service. We'll come out and look at your irrigation system, make sure it's running efficiently. We can set the controller for you, because I know they can be complicated and whatnot. But I also want to announce this has been a really good year for water. After we've had some dire years of water, we have a good supply, which is really great, but we can't forget that, you know, especially with climate variability and the competition for water, our state keeps growing. When I was a kid growing up in this state, there were 16 million people. Now, there's 39 million people, same amount of water. So, we can't waste any water. We have to use it efficiently. We need to fill up our groundwater basin, because that is what got us through the last drought, because we got very little imported water. So, it's just a good idea to conserve water. It cuts down on costs, because it costs a lot of money to pump that water and to treat it, and to hire professionals like myself to work with it. So, the less we use, the better off we are, and I just want to thank you, because, I mean, the city, our whole area here, water is the most critical component to everything. So, thank you for acknowledging the month, and please contact the Water Resources so we can help you use it more efficiently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Are there any items the council would like to pull? I'd like to pull item A16. Any others to come up?
I'd like to pull A12, A13.
And I'd like to pull A18, A19, please.
Okay. Do we have any from the public?
I do. I have A7, A8, A11, A15, A17.
Okay.
So, just to go, it's A7, A8, A11, A12, A13, A15, A16, A17, A18, and A19 have been pulled.
Correct. Is there a motion?
Someone?
Does the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're going to move to item A7. From the public.
Zavon Casada?
I don't want to speak too loudly in the microphone, but I'd like to also say, like, how is my community of champions doing, you know, my community of drivers and go-getters and innovative brilliance? Because every time I get up here, I just feel like this energy every time I look at my community. And I was just wondering, Mayor, you know, with this license things, I think I've said this before, because, you know, I feel like an agenda, when you put something on an agenda, it's important. You know, things are important on here, you know, like, you take the time to put these on here, and, you know, I was wondering, what do you actually do for this ABC license review? Because some of the businesses downtown don't even know who you are. And we had a business have a hiccup, like the Roma Sellers, that I'm pretty sure if you were checking up on the businesses, that probably wouldn't happen. Because if you opened a business downtown in Hollister, I would make sure I know you from your head to your toe, to know what's going on with you, and not have any hiccups in your business, because you're coming to Hollister. You're actually helping it, you know, push forward, bring in some kind of innovative thinking, some brilliance. And I just want to know, what do you actually do when you go in there? Do you just have them, "Hey, I have a paper for you to sign, awesome," and then go? Or is it actually, do go in there and find out who they are as a person, as a champion, as a store owner in Hollister? Because our downtown is looking a little bit empty again. And I was just wondering, Mayor, because, you know, there's things on this agenda that should be on there, like the homeless, and, you know, things of disturbance that could be changed, and like, our downtown empty, you know, stuff like that. So, I was just wondering, if, I like to speak, I got two minutes, three minutes, actually. Can I not be interrupted? Please, thank you very much. I'm asking you appropriately, can you please not disrespect me? Please, thank you. I'm speaking.
Stay on the subject.
I am on the subject. What do you actually do when you go and check these people for their license? Because we had a couple hiccups in here, and the Roma Sellers, one of them, and the Mansmith, which makes me very sad, because it could have been something big. And maybe if the mayor knew what was going on with his downtown people that were actually opening up the business, this wouldn't have happened, would it? I don't think so.
Okay, so let me answer your question, and so the public understands, it is not our job to judge business owners, or tell them if they can or can't be in business. What happens here, this is an application for a license from the ABC, and what they do, fill out the application, the police department does the background check, wants it approved, then it goes back to the ABC, they do their check, and they decide whether or not to license the business to serve or sell alcohol. It's just part of the process that everybody is entitled to, to make sure they have the opportunity to open their business. If something came back that was an issue, they would not get their license.
Mayor, if you'll just set anything or just set up there, I'll hold you.
Sir, I just answered your question. Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other questions, any other speaker cards?
There are no other speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion on number seven, that we acknowledge receipt of ABC license review for La Sabrosa.
La Sabrosa. Is the motion, is there a second?
I second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're going to move to item A8.
Item A8, ABC license review, Alboron D. El Dizieto, 321 San Felipe Road, Suite 6. I have one speaker, Zavon Casada.
Hello, my community of champions, you know, my motivated community of champions that gets me going inside. And I came up again, Mayor, because there's two of them on here. There's two of the same thing, and I want to understand, because obviously you didn't get it the first time. I'm not speaking about, we can't tell people how to open a business or when to go out or in, but you want to know the person on a personal behalf, who they are, what kind of person they are, what kind of businesses are they bringing to Hollister, some kind of focus point, like, which way do we go, what direction, what are we bringing to our downtown? I mean, this place is like, the Moment Shop, the Flower, you've never even been in there. The woman's actually innovative. If you go by there at night, her lighting actually attracted me to go in there, but I'm pretty sure you don't know about that, right? Because you never really walked the city at night and checked out lighting in the storefronts? Because there's so many storefronts that need, like, some help. And have you ever even went in there and said, "Hey, you know, I was looking at your storefront, it's been like, seven months, you know, like, you know, kind of want to change it up a little bit, you know?" Giving your input as a mayor, as someone who's leading, not someone who just sits there and combs his hair, but someone that pays attention about what's going on in our city. That's why, Mayor, you missed the whole entire thing. Next time, I'll draw a picture on the board, so you can understand what I'm saying.
You have a question on this application. So, let me explain again, for the public, it is not our job to look at business owners and talk about rumors or different things about what they should be or shouldn't be, or why we like them or don't like them. When a business applies for a license in the City of Hollister, everyone is entitled to have that license for their business. When it's a license that requires approval by the state, there's a background check done by the police department, there's a background done by the state, and if it's all approved, and this council, not myself, this council together approve it, it moves forward. We're not in the business of saying no to new businesses, or telling, it's part of the legal, it's part of the legal process. Okay? Do we have any other speakers?
I have no more speakers on that item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept, we acknowledge the receipt of the ABC license review for...
An order filed.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll move to item A11.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Tina Garza, I'm Recreation Supervisor.
I think this was called by the public?
This was called, yes. So, Resolution Number 201989, a resolution of the city council, the City of Hollister approving the contractual agreement and establishing fees for a summer camp program with Playwell Technologies. I have one speaker, Zavon Casada.
Go ahead, if you have a question. If you have a question for me. Okay, what I want to say is, talking about first, that I can ask you a question. Okay. This contract that we have a partnership with is with Playwell Technology. It's a STEM program that we offer, we will offer in the summertime to the youth in our community, and STEM is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics.
Thank you, Tina.
Some summer programs for the youth, because there's not really that much for them to do here anyway, so I appreciate that. You're super cool, you're super awesome, go getter, I love it. I was just wondering about, because it says fees right here, I just wanted to know, like, what kind of appropriate things are we doing for those, you know, I have a lot of friends, I have kids, and they're always discussing about the fees, you know, that they wanted, like, you know, be able to maybe have, like, a low-income thing, because Hollister has nothing really to offer them during, like, not summertime. So, and then I was thinking to myself, well, one of our council members, I'm pretty sure, Roland, doesn't, you start, have something like a paint party or something like that, an idea that, you know, you work together with someone, I wonder who that person was, but then when it comes to fees, I know pretty much you don't want to do nothing for free, because it's all about the money. So, I was just wondering, how come you haven't set something up to, like, do something with the youth for the summertime? Because it is summertime, right? Summertime for the youth to go out and do something, to go out and be productive, and do something with Hollister, but some can't afford it. So, I'm just throwing that out there. Hey, I'm just being a community member, and I'm just throwing the things out there that are on my mind, and that makes sense a little bit. We need more people, champions like this woman here, that are trying to bring things to the community, and maybe kind of waive some fees, waive some fees here, so everyone can be participating, right? I think that's what's cool. I appreciate you, I do. And I appreciate the rec center trying to get balance. I see all the programs that they're offering. I went to the Farmhouse, which is actually a cool coffee shop, Mayor, you should check it out, and they had all these activity forms on the tables, and the rec center is actually making a movement. Now, they need a center where they can actually provide that, and I'm totally for that, awesome. And I just want to say, you know, it'd be kind of cool if, you know, I don't know, Roland, I mean, you are a council member, and you do have something to do with the art thing, and I mean, you could put something for free, too, or maybe work with our Recreation Center to make, put something together, but I know free is kind of hard for you to work with. That's it.
I'd like to answer that, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So, we have year-round sports, if I'm not mistaken, that are free to the public. I even sponsored the 49ers flag football recently. During the summer, there's going to be several parks that are going to be offering the free lunch program for our children, as well as free arts, if I'm not correct, if I'm not mistaken, free arts, and then we're also going to have free science for the kids during summer. So, we want to have, and we encourage as much recreational opportunity for our children at little to no cost. Thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate it.
I just want to point out how great our rec department is in our community, and there are so many programs that are offered, and those can't afford it, we always find a way to help them cover the cost. So, there's a lot of great things going on out there. All you have to do is ask, and that's why we're here, these meetings. So, thank you very much. Councilmember Lenore?
Yes, my kids were posters of children for city rec when they were little, that's what they did. Is there any way that we could ask the community to maybe sponsor some kids, or, I don't know if you have any way to advertise? I'm actually maybe going to sponsor a kid for a week.
Thank you.
I have a tight budget, but I think that's very important, and maybe other people in the community would like to do a little outreach and sponsor some kids for this STEM summer camp program.
We do provide those opportunities. We reach out. There's been a couple of sponsors. RJR Recycling has sponsored some STEM classes, and Central Ag Supply has sponsored children to attend STEM classes also. So, there's opportunities for them, they just have to come down to the Recreation Department.
And you need at least 10 participants, right?
Yes, for that class. So, what, we charge a minimal fee. Playwell Technologies charges us $125, and in return, we just charge a small percentage.
Oh, it's not 120?
It's 125 is what STEM well, Playwell Technologies charges the Recreation Department per participant, and we just add a processing fee of, I think it's $12, $5? Oh, $5. Do we charge 130?
So, it would be $125 to sponsor a kid, 130 for this camp?
Yes.
Okay.
We just, yes.
My sister and I will go halfers on that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. There are children that would like that opportunity.
Obviously. Yeah, we weren't rich with our kids either, but we've managed to pay, but a lot of kids can't, a lot of parents can't, and those are the ones I hope we can reach out to.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the contractual agreement and establish fees for summer camp program with Playwell Technologies.
Okay, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move to item A12.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Diana Hillstock, and I'm the HR analyst for the City of Hollister. This item is related to updates to the job descriptions for the junior water maintenance operator, water maintenance operator 1 and 2. Currently, the 1 and 2 are one job spec, whereas you have the junior separated out. So, with adopting this, you're combining all three, and it's becoming a flexibly staffed positions. As you may be aware, we also have other class series similar, as your S Support Services assistants, your accounting technicians. And the reason for this is for, in the past, we've had issues hiring water maintenance operators with the state certifications. So, by combining the junior water maintenance operator, we can hire someone, and then they would have that time to obtain those certs and the, the, sorry, the experience for that position, and then once they gain that, then what we can do is reclassify them to a junior 1.
Okay. Councilmember Resendez, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification. I think you provided that. The other thing is, I think we had updated, was it that you updated the job description? And I wasn't clear as to what exactly where it was updated, or how it was changed.
The current one, this one right here?
Yes. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So, basically, currently, we have a job specification for the water maintenance operator 1 and 2, and then we have a separate job description for the junior water maintenance operator.
Okay, and I might have missed it, but I didn't see them in here, so.
Yes, they were attached with the agenda, yes, and they're all three in it showing that they're flexibly staffed.
Essentially, Councilmember Resendez, is that we had two job specs in the past, one for water operator 2, one for, I'm sorry, a water operator 1, and a 2, and a junior 1, and now they've just been combined.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you. So, I'm really supportive of accurate job descriptions. I think it's absolutely essential to make sure that people are properly classified, that they get properly recognized and compensated for the work they do, and the only way you can do that is you know what they do. And the only way you can do that is you know what they do, so I'm in support of that. I'm also in support of the flexibility of combining them. The only thing I would mention is that it would help a lot if you, if, if, if that kind of explanation was upfront on the, in the future on the staff report. And also, I know it's a bit of a pain, but if you, if we, if these documents are in Word, I don't know if they are original documents.
Yes.
If you would use the strikeout, just turn on the strikeout option that shows what was removed, what was added. Otherwise, what we have to do is look at a Word, to Word comparison, to try and figure it out. You know it very well.
Right.
The staff knows it very well. And I think that would help us really get through it quicker without future things. So I am in support of doing it. I feel the same way about the other one, we're doing it. Accurate job descriptions are essential, but the easiest way to get through the council, I think, is just, just to show in the, on the long form, the actual strikeouts and the additions.
Okay. So for future, just to show the track changes?
Yeah, just something to think about. If we have the, you know, if we have the staff time to support that, it would make it a lot easier to try and do a word-for-word comparison. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Do we have any speaker cards? Did you have a question?
No, no, no question.
Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2019-90, adopting revised job description for positions of junior water operator, water maintenance operator one and two.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to item A-13.
I'm actually going to pass this one over to Chief of Police.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is an update to the job description for Community Services Officer. If you look to your packet, the department summary, it'll sort of iterate what those changes are. But to be succinct, it changes the job description to allow them to enforce municipal codes, and also changes whom can supervise them, being police lieutenants and above.
Same thing. I pulled the item just because I thought it correlated with the first one. I didn't want to not pull this one and then approve one without... So same thing, I think Vice Mayor handled it well, and said, if we just have clear clarification on what exactly is being changed, that'll make our job so much easier, so...
It's in the department summary.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Resolution 2019-91, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister adopting revised job description for the position of Community Service Officer within the Police Department.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're going to move to item A-15. We'll leave this to call from the public.
Resolution Number 2019-93, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister approving the proposed boundary of the 811 Santa Ana Road subdivision for the annexation of territory into Community Facilities District Number Five, Annexation Number Five for Police and Fire Services. I have one speaker card, Zavon Casada.
Hello, my community of, I called you champions, I called you go-getters, I called you drivers, I called you innovative, I called you brilliant. It's awesome, it's amazing. I just wanted to know, you know, with this new facility, I know the last time I was here at a city council meeting, there was something like a drop zone, which is very bad for the police and for the fire chief, because they have to be able to contact you from here to there. They have to make sure every contact, everybody that's in help needs it. So I want to make sure, is this facility going to help them, because they need that help? And I'm totally down for safety in the city. Safety is important, you know? You don't want to go to a meeting and feel shady, you know, going in there, like a woman had said before coming to a meeting, she felt like it was kind of sketchy. And it doesn't feel like that, you know? The police and the fire take care of what they have to take care of, you know what I mean? And I just want to make sure that the facility is helping them do that, and not just another facility, but actually helping them so they don't have any more drop zones, that they're able to come with more innovative ideas like they have, and not just protect the city, but bring something of innovation. Because the police can do that, too, as well, and so can the firemen. Just making sure of that, that's it.
What this is, is what we call Community Facility District Fee, so all new homes have to help pay the cost to cover police and fire, and the cost on this fee, this CFP, is $775 for any new homes in that new neighborhood. So those new homeowners will have to pay that fee every year to help offset the cost of police and fire in future.
The city should just pay for it.
Well, that's the problem, enough revenue to cover the cost. That's why these fees are there, otherwise, there's not enough revenue to keep our police department. Okay, is there any other?
I have no other speakers on that item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2019-93, approving the proposed boundary for 811 Santa Ana Road for annexation into Community Facilities District Number Five.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're going to move to item A-16. I called this. I don't need an explanation, I'm okay with it, it's just a voting deal. But is there any questions from other council members at all?
I think I made it pretty clear, and I don't have anything else to say.
Do we have any speaker cards? Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Resolution 2019-94, Resolution City Council, City of Hollister, authorizing Mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the City of Hollister and San Bernardino County Economic Development Corporation, and approving supplemental appropriations.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
So three, two, vote on that? We're going to go to item A-17 from the public. There's a question from the public on this one?
Resolution Number 2019-95, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister approving a supplemental appropriation of $45,000 from Fund 304 for the Development Services Engineering Division Operating Budget. I have one speaker, Zavon Casada.
Whenever I see money on here, I like to know what's going on with it. So $45,000 for moving from one place to another, I mean, we just talked about budget, Mayor, didn't we? About you need $700-something dollars to make sure that the police get what they need and the fire department? Well, take out the $45,000, you're trying to take it for miscellaneous traffic studies, really? Like, what kind of miscellaneous traffic studies is, oh, two cars came there, they stopped, cool, let's go have a $1,000 lunch? Or something like, I mean, come on. I mean, what is going on here? We're spending money for what? You're talking about getting $700 for the fire department and for the police that'll protect our city, $700 and something dollars. And we're using $45,000 to use for traffic studies, miscellaneous. I mean, really? Really, Mayor, like, honestly, take a look at that. I want to really draw your picture to show you how ridiculous it sounds. Like, we're talking about money of hundreds, and you want to move thousands, and we're talking about protecting our city, and you're talking about miscellaneous traffic studies.
Okay, I'd be happy to explain it, just so we're clear for the public. The money for the CFDs, the $775, is for every new home. So after a while, when you have 1,000 new homes, that's 775...
1,000 new homes, but nothing to do with it.
$775,000 to help offset the cost for police and fire. This amount is additional dollars that the department needs to do more traffic studies, so we know where to put more crosswalks, more stop signs, slow down vehicles in different neighborhoods. So enable, for us to do any of that, first thing that has to happen is a traffic study. If we don't do a traffic study, folks, and something were to happen to someone, the city would be sued. So if we can't just put a stop sign somewhere, or a stoplight, the traffic study has to be done first, and when the traffic study warrants that it's okay to put a stop sign or crosswalk, or so on, then we can move forward. This is done by firms that come in and do, basically hang out there for a few days, do studies, watching traffic flow, to make sure it warrants it. And that's what this department needs, so they can do several studies around the city. It's not only one, it's several, several locations throughout the city.
And if I may, the Finance Director just reminded me that these funds are from a fund that can only be used for that type of...
Right, right. Okay. It's part of the process, sir. Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you. I want to add this clarification, because it comes up all the time in my discussions with the public. There are a lot of funds we have that are restricted in their use. You can only use them for one thing or another. We don't have the freedom to move all the funds around we want. Some of them, in general funds, we have a lot of freedom. But we have a lot of specific funds that you pay for, in various taxes, new developments pay for, grants from the federal government, grants from the state government. They go into a very specific fund, and it can only be used for what's allowed. So when we take those monies out of a traffic study fund, for instance, for transportation, that's all you can do with them. We don't have the option of using them for recreation, we don't have the option of using them for painting the sidewalk, or anything else. All we can do with them is what they're granted. Now, the good news is, because many politicians have pet projects, it sometimes lets you get some more funding. The bad news is, you may need it over here and have it over here, and you just can't do anything about that. That's the way it is. So you will hear a lot about that on all our stuff, and I just want to make sure that the public understands why we don't shuttle the money around to where we need it all the time, and the reason is, we can't. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Lenore?
A good example is, I got a request for a stop sign down near the courthouse, actually the library. The gentleman was very concerned about sight distance, and a lot of pedestrians right there in that area, and it is a troublesome intersection. So this is one of those things where I asked the department head to please ask his staff to look into that. And they'll do a little study, and they'll might paint the curb so they can push back the parking, and they may install another stop sign, and this allows them a little flexibility without having to come here every time to the council to get some additional funding to study that intersection. So this is really a good tool for the Engineering Department.
Okay. Do we have any other speaker cards?
I have no other speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2019-95, approving a supplemental appropriation of $45,000 from Fund 304 for Engineering Division Operating Budget.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll go to item A-18. This was called by Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Council. My name is Cecilia Rodriguez, I'm the Management Analyst for the Administrative Department of City of Hollister. The City of Hollister's certificate of deposits are currently managed by Wells Fargo Bank. Wells Fargo Bank currently charges between $250 and $500 per item, or per deposit. The new trustees holder CD account with Pershing LLC Bank is, will not be subject to any monthly or per transaction fee, so we'll be saving about $250 to $500 per month, per transaction. So we're just asking to get approval to open the new account with the Pershings LLC for our new deposits.
Okay.
So here's my question.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
You talk about the certificates being managed by them. Who are the certificates with? Are the certificates with Pershing LLC?
With Wells Fargo, currently.
Okay, so they will manage our Wells, they will manage our Wells Fargo certificates?
Wells Fargo is holding our deposits, CDs.
Okay, they are Wells Fargo CDs, then?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
They're actually holding the CDs? We have CDs with numerous other banks?
That's what I want to know.
So they're just a holding...
Okay, so they're just going to hold, they're not going to, the CDs not with Pershing LLC, they're just going to function as the holding agency?
Correct.
That's important to me. For those in the public who don't know, Pershing LLC is a subsidiary of one of the Mellon Banks, currently owned by Credit Suisse, and they're about a billion-dollar corporation. The reason I asked about the certificates is because the Pershing itself is not FDIC insured, because it's not a federal bank, and I wanted to make sure that the certificates were backed up. They are with insured banks, right?
Yeah, when we purchase our CDs, we make sure that they're under the FDIC requirement, and that's why we have numerous CDs.
I wanted to make that clear, in case, in case there's any questions come up, that the certificates themselves are insured by FDIC, and that these, Pershing LLC is only act as a holding company. I appreciate your information, thank you very much.
Any other questions, Council? All right, do we have any speaker cards on that item?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
The motion, is there a second?
Resolution 2019-96, Resolution City Council, City of Hollister, approving and authorize setup of a new bank account with Pershing LLC.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move to item A-19. It's called by Vice Mayor Richmond also.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Can you talk about the entire project, or just the addition? So it's up to you.
I wanted to make a statement, and I want to ask you a question about the addition.
Go for it.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
First of all, based on my military training, and the fact that I do shoot recreationally, I want to say, I want to tell the public, I want to express to the public how important it is to be trained. It's absolutely a skill that requires training. You can't pick it up any other way. It requires repeatability, it requires muscle memory, it requires all kinds of adaptation to situations, and if you want to make sure that bystanders don't get hurt, and that deadly forces only used when necessary, it requires training. And training requires that you have somewhere to do it, and that's an expensive proposition because of the safety involved, and the environmental, the environmental portion of it, which involves lead. So you got to, you got to keep it cleaned, cleaned up. The only question I had, Chief, was, there was some statement in the, that I didn't quite understand, because it was before my time. There was some, some statement in the reason that the bid was higher was, were we going to do something with our own, our own assets that we could no longer do, something like that?
Yes, that was the original plan, that's why we have a secondary bid for labor from the actual firms themselves.
Okay.
And we were unable to do that, so we had to use their, because of the lead contamination, the other things.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, it is, it involved, because many, many ranges are having lead contamination issues.
Right.
And I wanted to make sure that's what it was, huh?
Right, we're trying to avoid that, because this material encapsulates the lead almost 90%, which is, which is extremely high, as opposed to your conventional range.
Yeah, thank you. I'm satisfied.
Any other questions? Do we have, Councilmember Resendez?
I have some questions about, at the very end, the financial impact. It says, "Zero increase to existing budget. $66,000 moved from savings and regular salaries to capital funds to complete project."
Exactly.
So, I just read this, and it was reminding me, we had a constituent, it wasn't actually me, a constituent that was asking for some, some financial inquiries about the animal control shelter. I'm sure you remember that. And then I brought it up to you and then I brought it up last time. But I'm just wondering, could some of the salary savings be in this existing funds that is now going to go over to the capital funds?
Which?
From the animal control?
They're two different sources, completely. Animal control has its own separate fund.
Perfect, okay, that's what I want to know. And then second of all is, initially where did this money come from? Which budget or which pool of money?
Salary.
And is it?
So the general fund?
General fund, yeah.
Funds our operation.
Perfect.
These savings are from salary.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have any other speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2019-97. Resolution Hollister City, authorizing city manager accept a bid for the shooting range upgrade project, award contract to Migget Training Systems Incorporated, approve the appropriation of $66,154 in savings and regular salaries fund to pay for the project.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to public input. This is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have speaker cards tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Zavon Casada.
And when I say that as a public input, because I want to speak to the public, my community. For I think unity is a strong word in community, right? Unity the core of all its likings. And I'd like to see, you know, people that work for the city walking out while, as I speak about this, because it has to do with some of them, for an incident that happened. Yeah, an incident. You know, I was in Gilroy for two weeks and a champion I am, I was doing artwork. And you know, the city of Gilroy actually took care of my artwork. They cleaned it up, they left it alone, and they actually appreciated it. I want to say the same about Hollister, but I was gone for 15, 20 minutes and all of my artwork was thrown away, even downtown, thrown in the garbage. Not to mention the other rumors times that it's done that. And I wondered to myself, why is that mountain of garbage behind my paintings that were thrown away still there? If they care about so much about cleaning our city up, there's so much garbage everywhere in the city for you to see. But yeah, my artwork, my artwork that you can't fill out an application, well, actually I did. I paid $40 to get into the art gallery here. And Jennifer Lane, the director, told me my artwork was too big, but they have a surfboard in there that's two times bigger in the gallery. So I wonder, why is not my artwork in there but that surfboard? I'm just wondering these things because they're happening to me and my city. My city that I love. I was born here, I have family here. And I, and I come to the city with encouragement, hey, you know, I want to, I want to do something here, I want to, I want to move forward. And then I looked at the newspaper and this man from the Bay Area was dead. I dare you to put this homeless family inside your multimillion dollar home. And he did. It was in the paper, in the San Francisco Chronicle. And he did, and now it changed his life. So actually I throw a little dare to whoever's out there, I guess it's on TV too. I dare someone. You think I'm crazy or something? Put me in a room for 20 minutes, a room with no interruptions or nothing. And I wake up, everybody's champion, like motivational speaking, you know, like, it's like David Robinson does, but you know, with the backing of its city. And you know, Mayor, you have a building, right? The vote? So how about I dare to you? How about I dare you, Mayor, to put me in your building for one day to have a motivational speaking ceremony real quick for 20 minutes? Since you care so much about our city and our residents and our youth, which one man, to see the youth here and to see how brilliant they are with a young lady coming up here and talking about it, to see how, it takes courage to come up here and talk. And to see them at a young age doing that, it's inspiring. They run the robotics contest too, in the high school. And you know, there is things to do all summer long, but where can I take my family to have a barbecue today in the city? Where can my family go have a barbecue in the park? When? Today? Like I want to go right now after this, I want to go to a barbecue. I know it's kind of late, but you know barbecue or quick dinner or something? There's nowhere. And I've heard that from owners that own the businesses downtown. You can't take your children and have them at barbecue anywhere. I know not at the airport because they don't even have a porter party out there. Do you understand what I'm saying, Mayor? I speak to you and not in disrespect, but in respect of my city. To understand, like, do you understand what's going on here? This is a business, not some playground, not some like, you show up once, once, two weeks, you show up and, yeah, you're here and you're, yes, you know, and, and, and yay, hey. And not understand, like, what's going on here? Where are, what direction are we moving to, Mayor? You're supposed to be our leader, right? Well, lead us to something that's brilliant.
Susan Logue.
I would champion, I would everybody's champion up, I promise that. I want to be a motivational speaker, I need a mentor. And I'm throwing that to my city.
Next speaker?
Susan Logue.
Come on, Susan.
Hi, everybody. Susan Logue. Now I'm speaking as a friend of the library, okay? In a little bit, I'm going to talk like coalition member. But right now, I wanted to be, I, thank you to the mayor and city council for being here. Thank you for having me. I wanted to report the library's recent doings on the weekends. So it's been really great, two weekends they opened up, on Fridays, Saturday, Sunday. So Friday is free arts and crafts for everybody in the community. I think it's four to five. And then Saturday is free movies. So come on down, they give you popcorn too. And I think this Saturday might be adults. So you might want to check first because I think last Saturday was Spider-Man. And then on Sunday, they'd lay goes. And two Sundays ago, they had so many kids, they had 75, that they had to separate the groups. So now we've got like a teen group and a young group going. So I just want to let you know about that. It's very exciting and we're very happy about the response from the community. Get ready for summer reading. That's going to be starting in June. And we're going to have it Tuesdays and Thursdays this summer. One day's teens. So we're really reaching out to the teen community and hope they'll participate with us. Right now, there's a lot going on with the STEM and that sort of stuff and they're really enjoying that. So thank you for that. Now I'd like to speak to you as a coalition member. And I'm with the Coalition for a New Community Library and Resource Center. We continue to meet, we've been meeting for two years now. Our next meeting is May 18th, 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock at the library. So all welcome to come, public. Please come, we'd love to have you. Tammy Viles is my co-chair and we have been meeting with all the board of supervisors members and now all the city council members. And I think we've met with everybody. We appreciate that and appreciate your time. We've also visited several libraries and continue to do that. And we're looking at different facilities right now. Our next step is to have an organization come in and do a poll. So we need a survey in order to determine what to do next. So that proposal for cost is going to come to us, I think, the end of this week. So we're hoping we can come back to the city council and then go to the board of supervisors and show the proposal and how much money it's going to cost for the survey. It's going to be quite a bit. We can't do it all ourselves, but I think we can do it together. So thank you so much for your time and I look forward to working with the ad hoc committees. I'm still kind of waiting for the, the city and the board of supervisors. So we're supposed to get together with them and then move forward for the next steps for a new library. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan.
Thanks, Susan.
Amber Cameron?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Amber Cameron and I am a director with Reach San Benito Parks Foundation. I'm here tonight to invite the community out to a moonlight walk at Hudner Ranch out at Hollister Hills CRV. It'll be taking place May 18th, that's Saturday, at 8:00 PM. This event is open to the first 40 people that register. If you're interested, you can register at info@reachsanbenito.org or you can visit our Facebook page. Name is Reach San Benito Parks Foundation. If you're not familiar with where Hudner Ranch is, it's located on the east side of Sianica Road, approximately five miles south of Union and Sianica Road Junction. The event itself is free, however, there is a park fee of $5. We're encouraging people to come out. It's beautiful out there. We've hosted several other moonlight walks. We've been fortunate to have council member Resendez come out there and join us. Yeah, so anybody, feel free to come out. We encourage people to wear warm layers, comfortable shoes. Of course, bring water and a flashlight if you feel more comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Salvador Mora?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'd just like to, you know, I'm going to touch on a couple of different things in the short time that I have. But, you know, on social media, the public was made aware of that visions project that you guys were involved with, kind of how to work, figure out ideas and how to work together to attain them. So it was kind of peaceful because it was quiet because I guess you guys were busy, couldn't post too many bad things on, on social media. But then come Monday, start all over again with our great mayor of Hollister. The great thing about your posts and a lot of your deception is that people are starting to know what you're about and how much, how untruthful you are. It's very disturbing to have repeatedly our city leaders, certain city leaders, put out wrong information, deceiving information, and continuously making city staff members look bad without any proof, calling them liars. I wouldn't say cockroaches, that was someone else, was Mr. Resendez. But it's basically saying that city staff members are on the take. This is ridiculous. Again, time and time again, you consistently do this. You're starting to do this now, Mr. Resendez, which I'm disappointed. I had hope for you and I continue to have hope. But you never provide proof. We've asked you many times. Anytime someone asks you on social media, provide proof, you always reply with a question or ask something else. Or you know what, let's do this right. You've been saying, let's take a step back, let's do things right, for almost five years now. You've never provided any blueprint to doing it right. You just don't like anything that goes against your ideas. You know, that whole 400 block? If you would take the time to, to invest into other issues in the city, we'd probably be moving forward. But you consistently go back. You say you speak as a community member, but you're paid, as Hollister City Mayor. So speak the truth. You know, you don't tell everybody, you know, you're a good, you sales car is what you are, at least in my opinion. And it's not very good. You're not really as good as you think you are because the public's starting to find out exactly who you are and what you're about. And I'd like to thank everybody who participated in the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. And it's, it's a, it's a good event. Fortunately, I couldn't be there this year. Very thankful. And for the young people that were there, you know, a lot of things came out to, during the campaign. And I just wanted to say that, you know, Mr. Resendez, I'm happy that you were supportive in this Walk a Mile event. I know that some stuff came out during the campaign that said that you were...
Thank you, Mr. Mora.
That you, you participated in domestic violence? And I'm glad that the young people in our community can see that, even if you did do that, that you now have changed your ways and you're supportive against domestic violence. Thank you.
Your time is up. And I, I have to say this because there wasn't one item being said here. But no, we can't comment because it's not a direct item. You know, I don't appreciate people coming up and actually insinuating I'm lying about something. And that's what you're doing. So let me tell you something, be clear here. Just because, no, no, I can't make a comment. I can make a comment. Oh, absolutely, I can. I looked into this already. I can say this. Everybody has their rights or opinion. Just because you don't like my opinion doesn't mean I'm lying. Do not like this attempt to slander people up here by coming up and hoping somebody's not going to make a comment back at you. That's just wrong. You, as a person that ran for office, should have more respect than just come up here and attack somebody that can't respond.
I object. I object. Now, you know, you're supposed to make a brief comment. You're not supposed to go with this. I'm sorry. The rules apply to everyone. I object. Point of order.
Mr. Richmond, thank you.
Point of order.
You're going to come up here and make a comment about it? Please tell the truth, not just call me liar.
Mr. Mayor?
That's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Point of order.
I'd like to make a quick comment as well.
Point of order. The rules apply to everyone. You cannot comment on what people say in public comment.
When somebody comes up here and...
And accuses you and calls you out, then you have a right to respond. I'll make it brief.
That is not true.
Yes, it is.
Sir.
The people that I called cockroaches are the special interests and the lobbyists, like the one recording right now here in the city of Hollister, not the staff employees. Let's just get that straight. And the person who supported your campaign, Victor Gomez, the lobbyist and special interest. Those are who I called cockroaches, also the person who brought up my pass. Thank you very much for your comments. Much appreciated.
And now I'll make a comment that you saw it's fit to make yours.
Go right ahead, sir.
This is exactly what goes on. The mayor has a set of rules for himself and for everybody else. Okay? This is the worst part of it. It is not what he says, it is how he says it. He accused, he's accused all, every time he gets on there, he accuses the staff and the former members of the city council of being on the take. Every time someone asks him, and I didn't know what Mr. Mora is going to say, to prove it, he does not prove it. When I want to say something in response to a public people criticizing me, and Mr. Mora has criticized me severely, believe me, I'm not allowed to do it. But he can't keep his mouth shut. Now, Mr. Mayor, I don't care whether you like it or you don't like it, the rules apply to everybody. No one elected you emperor here and no one elected you dictator here. You have one vote and that's what you have. And that's your vote.
So let's just make it clear. If somebody wants to come up and accuse any one of us of something that's just completely false, you all have the right to say something because that shouldn't happen. That was a cheap shot, inaccurate, and should flat out lie.
Once again, I will say the mayor is extending what is not allowed. He can repeat it 100 times. I'm going to tell you, he's not allowed to respond to that. He can only make a brief comment. The funny part is, when he goes on, excuse me.
No, you made your comment.
No, you made yours. I want equal time.
We all made our comments.
I'm entitled to equal time.
We all made our comments.
I'm entitled to equal time.
Mr. Richmond, you...
I am entitled to equal time. I asked the board to unanimously vote that I get equal time.
Mr. Richmond, you're out of order.
I am not out of order, sir. I am not out of order.
You are.
I make a motion.
We're going to make, you cannot make a motion.
I can make a motion. There's an exceptional motion for personal privilege. It is in our process. The fact that you're not aware of it is a problem.
Mr. Richmond.
Okay.
I agree with council member Spencer. I'd like a little break. I think it's a good idea for the majority of us up here.
I'm not taking a break, ladies and gentlemen. I am staying here.
We're going to have a five-minute recess. Thank you.
I am staying here and I'm going to tell you what's going on.
Thank you, council member Spencer.
Please leave if you want to take a break.
Do we have any students that need...
What's going on here is the mayor's got a set of rules for himself and everybody else. He's insulted the staff, he's accused them of being liars, and he's accused them of being on the take. And when someone says to him, prove it, all of a sudden, he's insulted. He thinks he can insult everybody on social media.
Yeah, D1.
So, just real quick, my understanding is, is we were going to schedule an ad hoc meeting to go to a field trip to discovery debate to look at some issues with wastewater treatment plan up there. That's now being canceled, and we're going to move forward with our town hall meeting on the adult use or the cannabis ordinance, 1149, next Monday, which will be May 13th. That's going to be scheduled, and you should be getting your agendas here shortly. And that concludes my report.
Can we confirm time?
Oh, 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correct. Is that it?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Can we move to item E1? It's a public hearing? No, we're finished with public comment.
Howdy. This is the final hearing after today. We get the reading. It's been for the weed abatement. The letters have went out, so it's, today's the day where we get to hear any objections, any of that. And after that, we'll start our contracted weed person to start abating the weeds after tonight.
So that'll start this week?
Yeah. We'll start evaluating. I'm scheduled with him to go tour the, he's been here already, he's evaluated it, and we're constantly evaluating two, three times a week, basically within the city, San Juan Batista. But this is only for the city and Tres Pinos and within the sphere of influence of the city. So, we're constantly on that, hitting lots, identifying them, getting letters out. But for the city stuff, we're going to go Wednesday, evaluate the ones that haven't gotten taken care of, and then we'll start on that, which includes up to the Leatherback property and other ones we've hit already. But that's like one of our first priorities.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a comment.
Councilmember Lennar.
Thank you for doing this. You guys have been doing it a long time. And I know I've said this before, but would you just pass on to the contracted company to do the outskirts? And so it looks nice, because sometimes they don't get it all the way to the sidewalk. And then it's a nice, looks good, and then it's all on the sidewalk. And I want to see that cleaned up all the way.
So, yeah, we're definitely going to hit that. So, when we sent out our letters, we identified it in our letters to get sidewalks, fence lines, and property lines. So a lot of people just did the middle parts, so they're not going to be too happy now when we come and clean up the rest of the property lines and the sidewalks. Because the sidewalks get overgrown on, and they leave that, and they still can't walk on it. So we're going to go hit a lot of that stuff, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? This time, we're going to open for a public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
This time, we'll close public hearing. Okay, is there a motion?
I know we adopt resolution 2019-98 to decline the condition that certain properties constitute a public nuisance and order the abatement of leaves and conduct the hearing whether we see the objection to the proposed abatement.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll move to, thank you, move to item E2.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm Bob Martin, El Campo Fire Chief, Hollister Fire. Ordinance number 1175 is for the city of Hollister, adding chapter 2.10 to Title II, Administration and Personnel of Hollister Municipal Code of the city of Hollister, the appointment and general powers and the duties of the fire chief. In short, without going through the entire paragraph that you've already read, what this does is, as opposed to, or in accordance with the California Health and Safety Code 1797, which gives the fire chief and the fire department authority to perform their services, this ordinance will live within the city, the jurisdiction that I provide service and this department provides service to. There's no changes in the duties or any of the responsibilities. It is just that the authority comes straight from the city.
Okay, is there any questions or comments? Okay. This time, we'll open for a public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
This time, we'll close public hearing.
I move we adopt ordinance 1175 in North City Hollister, adding chapter 2.10 to Title II, the administration, personnel of Hollister Municipal Code of the city of Hollister, the appointment and general powers and duties of the fire chief.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Thank you. We're going to move to item F1.
Who's presenting this?
This guy.
I suppose I can present it, Mr. Mayor.
Your name's on it.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. My law firm is reorganizing its corporate formation. One of our partners will, over the next year, be moving into semi-retirement, so it required that we make some changes to our corporate formation. The contract that I submitted has a new name on it. That's the only reason that it's submitted. Everything else, aside from the mailing address and the name of the corporation, is exactly identical to the contract that I entered into with the city of Hollister last summer.
Okay. Is there any questions? No? Are there any speaker cards in this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
There's no public hearing. I don't know if I could entertain the council. I wasn't involved in the process when we did the contract with Jason's company. I really would like to see the RFP go out again. And I don't know how you feel about ever discussing the fact that we might have a part-time city attorney that has more dedicated time for just Hollister. So again, I really think, and it wouldn't be a difficult process to do another RFP because it was just done last year. So, I don't know how you all feel about that, or if you just want to proceed with the contract as it states. I'm interested in doing another RFP, and certainly would welcome them also to submit another request for services.
That's not on the agenda for tonight, though, I don't believe.
Well, it's renewing the contract, so I'm saying that, I'm thinking that, I'm making a proposal that we go back out to RFP.
I have to agree with the Vice Mayor. I don't disagree with you. I think that's fine, but I think right now is not the appropriate time for that. I think we have to vote on this, I'm assuming, and then you can probably put that on your information report or something to bring it back, I would imagine. But I don't think right now would be the appropriate time to entertain that.
We're going to renew the contract.
Well, does this contract have a cancellation clause?
Yeah, but, okay.
It does. And I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact number of days, but I think it's somewhere in the range of 30, 90 days.
Right.
Yeah. So this is basically partnership deal and changes, as law firms do. I can say from experience in the past, by having contracted attorneys, we've had much better service than we did when we had a full-time staff. I've been very happy with the performance of your firm. I was happy with the performance of the other firm before years, and I think it's worked out well. So, I have no issues as far as this item goes.
Let me clarify my point then, because I didn't say why. I feel like the strength isn't all the way there in the time commitment for our SEQA guidelines. There's a little bit of discord in the planning process with the representation that we currently have. So, that's where I'm coming from. I think we need a stronger SEQA lawyer to represent a very important document, and it could really mess the city up if it doesn't get the correct and time that it needs. And we're having more meetings now, so my other comment is, in the contract, it states four hours, two, or four hours twice a month. But now, we're meeting a lot more. So is it really adequate time because we're meeting more that's stated in the contract?
And as a warrant, if we're going to have more meetings, what's going to happen is staff is going to have to work more hours. It's going to end up costing us more money. And I'll go into my little piece later in our comments. But overall, what I've found in the past was, even if we had a staff attorney, they did not have the expertise to cover everything we would have to hire out for certain issues, legal issues, so...
We had a good attorney, but we had some good attorneys. Anyway, those were my thoughts. So, you know, obviously, everybody thinks their own.
All right. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I have a motion this time that we adopt resolution 2019-99 for the city's, a resolution that the city council, city of Hollister, authorized the city manager to execute a new professional services agreement with Epperson Law Group, PC.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go with the majority.
Okay. Five-oh. We're going to move to item F2.
Good evening again. So this report that I'm going to present is for resolutions 2019-100 through resolution 2019-105, due to them all in regards to the same matter. As such, staff will provide a report one time to cover all six resolutions and request that the council act on all of the items with the same determination. During 2018 labor negotiations with the various bargaining groups, the city council agreed to invite all employee bargaining units to participate in drafting language and a side letter agreement to compensate employees who perform verbal and written translation bilingual services for city business. That MOU contains a provision that all interested bargaining units be invited to participate in drafting language that, quote, "recognizes and compensates employees who perform verbal and written translation bilingual skills and who successfully pass a city-administered proficiency test," end quote. The MOU also states that the award of allowance shall be determined during the process. The initial stage of that process to meet over this matter has taken place, and a tentative agreement has been reached between the parties. All of the employee groups have agreed on the compensation amount of level one, $175 a month for employees that provide oral bilingual translation. Level two, $400 a month for employees that provide both oral and written bilingual translation. The breakdown for level two is $175 a month for the oral and $225 a month for the written portion. Now, as part of the process, this matter is presented to the council for approval, consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be more than welcome to answer them. If not, Administrative Services Director is here as well.
Okay. Is there any questions? Vice Mayor Richmond?
First of all, thank you for combining all these because they're essentially identical. And I, my comments and questions applied to all of them, essentially. and I, my comments and questions apply to all of them, essentially. First of all, a statement, I think there is real value in having bilingual, multilingual employees, and I wasn't here in 2018, so I don't, the truth of the matter is, I didn't participate in the MOU, but I couldn't find a lot of background comparison to other places. Have we done a comparison to other agencies, such as other cities, approximately our size, and other, maybe counties, and see what their, how much money, basically, they're paying?
Right. Yes, and I actually went ahead and looked over the surrounding cities, such as the ones that are normally used for compensation studies, such as City of Gilroy, Watsonville, Salinas, Los Banos, Gilroy, and majority of them do compensate by percentage or a flat rate, so, yeah.
Does that come out to approximately the numbers that we're proposing for ours?
No, it is much lower. It's lower.
Ours is lower, or?
No, the surrounding cities.
The surrounding cities is much lower. I didn't notice any limitation. Did we say, did we ever get to the point where we said, for instance, I don't want to make this too complicated, but for instance, when it comes to verbal, I think it's really, really handy in an emergency operation when you're dealing directly with the public. When it comes to documents, usually have more time to say, okay, I took a document and now who am I going to give it to to translate? So, did we establish for the documents, how many people we would allow to certify, or are we going to let everybody certify who can pass the test?
No, I think right now, we would, it would be at the discretion of the city to assign those assignments to staff.
Okay.
And that would be based on the needs of.
So, we're not, we're not going to let everybody, especially, I'm concerned about the.
No, they will be assessed as each situation arises.
You lost me there a minute.
I'm sorry. We'll assess each one if someone wants to test.
Yeah.
Again, it'll be at the city's discretion, so it just won't be.
Okay, but we haven't yet established a number. I understand it'll be at the city's discretion, but we haven't put any limits on, we hadn't said, well, we need three people in administration and four people in the payment center or whatever. No, we haven't done any.
No, no. Currently, we have about 50 employees that receive the bilingual pay for oral translation, and out of those, we're looking at possibly 11 that may test, and after testing, they also have to pass as well.
Yeah. Could you tell me, this may be more of a question for the, for the Finance Department, do you know if this counts as CalPERS retirement money?
Yes, it is per-able.
It is per-able?
Yes.
Okay. And what is our PERS rate right now, about 40%, somewhere in that neighborhood, is that I know it varies by department, especially between safety and.
It varies by safety or miscellaneous, and then also for Peppera people, right now, like the new employees, it's around six and a half percent.
Okay.
So, that's usually the newer people that are coming in.
Okay, but for.
So, like miscellaneous, it can be, it's about, I have to relook, it's in the high twenties.
Okay. All right, well, look, this kind of cements my feelings, which I'll tell, I'll sum it up like this. I think there's real value in having it, I think it's, we need it. I would like to see, I would like to see it fleshed out quite a bit. I'd like to see comparison to, I'd like to see the data for the comparison to the other locations, and I also would like to see some reasonable limitation on how many people we allow to qualify, especially, especially for the, probably no, none for the verbal, but especially for the written, because, because I want to make sure it's properly managed. The written, usually you have time. The verbal, if you need somebody in the police department or fire department to be bilingual, I think it's really important, because you have an emergency, someone in maybe Public Works, people who respond to emergencies, but I am concerned that this is going to grow, this program's going to grow and be enormously expensive, and it won't have the limitations on it. So, that's how I feel at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, personally, it's hard to justify paying additional $400 a month for employees that can write, first speaking, write in Spanish. We had this issue happen with the notary in the past, where pretty soon, we had quite a few people that were notarized, notaries, and getting extra pay, so it's not fair to everyone. If we really need that kind of service and the employees don't want to or can't, or don't have the time to do it, I know there's several people in town that provide these services for translation, that are certified translators, and it might be what we need anyway, so make sure it's certified. So, it's just hard to justify $400 per person that can do both speaking and writing. Councilmember Sendus?
I just want to echo the same sentiment as my colleagues up here. I don't understand how you came up with this number as far as financial impact, is that based on the 11 people that may qualify?
Yes, and actually, it's, the impact would actually be an additional $225, so.
Yeah, so, again, I agree with what the Vice Mayor is saying, it might be appropriate in some situations to have people, and I don't know if there's a way of managing that, to have somebody that's bilingual on staff to interpret during emergency situations for the chief or, sorry, for the police chief or for the fire chief, but I don't know how necessary it is for them to, you know, translate documents and whatnot. I'm just wondering if there's a better way that we can do this. Yeah, same as them, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any speaker cards?
Thank you. On this item?
Yes.
Okay. Maylene?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Maylene Delgado, I'm over at Public Works, I'm one of the support services there. One of my responsibilities is to translate via telephone, phone calls, we have a lot of Spanish-speaking people, people in the community. Another is doing it, translating papers, which includes signs for parks, like the rural parks, letters that go out to the residents as flyers, and it is a responsibility, because you have to make sure everything's translated correctly, but also, it does take time, apart from all the other assignments that you have to do, you have to translate and make sure that you're providing the correct information, and I would appreciate you all considering and looking at this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can actually provide a little bit of clarity for this, if you'd like that at some point.
Yeah, let's get through the, is there any other speaker cards?
Salvador Mora?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, as well as some of the council members and the mayor mentioned, I'm a little concerned, I do agree that we do need to probably increase this, the bilingual fee, I'm just a little concerned on the amount, the total amount, I think we need to do a little bit more research, look at the, look at the study that was done for the comparisons and see where we're at, you know, just from my limited experience with the county I worked with, which was Santa Clara County, the max we made, and it was Level 2, was 175 a month. We're looking at $400 a month. It's generous, if I was a public employee here in the city, I would say, yeah, let's definitely do it, but as a taxpayer, I'm a little hesitant, I'd like to see a little more research done, and, you know, if, you know, and also look at me, possibly do a wage adjustment if it warrants it as well. So, I would be a little, I'd caution us to not get overly excited and maybe pay a little bit more than what's needed, not saying that the work, that there isn't sufficient work, we do live in a high Hispanic community, but I think we need to do a little bit more research and take our time with this, you know, it's not something we want to overpay, you know, for this kind of work, it's definitely needed, but I think we just need to do a little more research before we come up with a rate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Amber Cameron?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Amber Cameron, I'm an Assistant City Planner, and I am also a Vice President for SEIU 521 Local. Thank you again for hearing this item, and thank you to staff that have prepared it. I just wanted to acknowledge that this is something that city staff as a collective have been working on for almost a year, so I appreciate, Mr. Richmond, you giving more direction, and I'm hoping that we can set some dates on when certain materials, if it's studies that want to be seen, we too, from SEIU, would like to see some more guidelines on who can apply and what that looks like, and I really wanted to touch base on the importance of keeping it in-house. I'm fortunate to have worked both in the Planning Department and the City Yard and know how important it is to have these services available, whether it is oral translation or written translation. Currently, in the department that I'm in, there's so many times where there's a document that is needed for a city event, and we don't have the opportunity to send documents out right away, so it's, we're fortunate to have people that are willing to look these documents over that are familiar with the work that we're doing, whether it's planning or engineering or city works or recreation, these are people that are working on these documents day in and day out, and the same applies to police and fire, these are the people that are dealing with it all the time and are familiar with it. So, I would just encourage you to please keep it in-house. I did some quick research before coming up here, take into consideration when you're looking, if it is going to go outsourced, that you're paying per page for some of these things that are happening, whereas it might be more cost-effective if you're paying somebody here monthly. So, again, thank you for your consideration, and city staff is excited to work with you, and let us know from SEIU, if you guys have any questions or if you would like to meet with us, we're more than willing to meet. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no more speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Chief, you had a comment?
I do. I can tell you, you simply cannot outsource this, especially when it comes to public safety. Our translators translate from Spanish to English and English to Spanish for court purposes, they do oral translation as well in critical interviews. Sometimes, we use other translators within the city. All these people can be called back to court with a, when you outsource, you can't control the costs, because then you would incur costs for calling them back to court as well. It's much cheaper and more efficient to use your own people as well. We don't operate in silos in Hollister, because it's a team of all the employees that we use, so at many times, if we're without a translator, we mostly have translators, but we will use any of the qualified ones that are within the city. Our job is service for this community, and it's important that we communicate with them the most efficient and best way possible. Oftentimes, some of these things go to court, and there's an issue of evidence, best evidence as well, and it's always better to use your own people, folks that have already been vetted to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I have one more speaker, or two more speakers. Art Hernandez and Rodrigo Aguilera.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I work as a city employee for Storm Department, City of Hollister Maintenance, too, and I can tell you how many times we've been in contact with the public that only speak Spanish. I mean, I've had issues with people actually trying to dig into the main line, that they didn't understand what was going on, I have issues where you have overflow sewer coming out, and they didn't understand what was going on, and the only people that were there are the people that spoke Spanish. Now, you wanted to contract this up, but I don't understand people that are going to actually have the passion that we have as workers for this city and do what we do, day in and day out, 10 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock in the morning, doesn't matter. Right now, as we speak, I am on call, and I get paid the bilingual, because I do speak perfect Spanish, I write perfect Spanish, and I like the city and I love the city that we live in, and I think we do deserve what was proposed, and I hope you don't outsource it out and think of the people that actually work for the city, and have, I've been here for 42 years, went to San Bernardino High School, went to Oro Hardin Ranch, and there's nobody else that's going to take care of you but your own. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros del consejo y fiscal. Hi, my name is Rodrigo Aguilera, and I work for the Water Department. I would like to see if you guys will, we willing to consider not outsourcing. There have been many situations where employees, we have to actually translate in a written form for some of the clients that we service. I know 60, about 67% of the population in Hollister is Hispanic-speaking or Spanish-speaking, and like my coworker said, some of the times, they're not able to write, and their only primary language is Spanish, so we will have to leave a note in Spanish for their family members, and we, we don't get compensated for that, we still do it because it's our job, but I would like to speak in behalf of all the city employees, that they do translate documents, and they're not getting paid for it. It would be nice if you guys can consider not outsourcing it and keep it in-house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speaker cards?
I'll fill out my speaker card right now. I'm Charlie with the Fire Department, and I am not a bilingual translator verbally or written, but I highly do recommend it, as far as I'm concerned, this isn't enough, so there's been many a times, it's all about the customer care and customer service, and this is something a valuable asset that we have to provide to the public, you know, I've reached out to numerous departments before and utilized them, because I'm working with development and the people in code enforcement, fire prevention, emergency, non-emergency, or just being out in the public, and I can be on emergency incident or non-emergency incident, and when I say an emergency incident, that could be a storm or a water break or anything like that, they'll call us out, and a lot of times, I'm the one left without any help, so I'm reaching out to everybody out here throughout the city that have been there numerous times to help us out in that, and it's really good to have, to be self-sufficient to provide that customer service to them, so I highly do support this.
Thank you. So.
Sorry, I'll give you my card in a second, Christine. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I used to be a certified, court-certified interpreter, and also not just for Spanish language, but also for American Sign Language, and it is very important to have, and when I used to do this decades and decades ago, there were very minimal amount of people that were able to do that, the translating, especially within the city and stuff like that. I was able to do it in court, I was able to do it in DMV hearings, and I was able to do it for the Fire Department, so it come, you never know when it's going to be needed, whether it's an accident in the middle of the night, or, you know, somebody walks into the department, any department, and people call you and you're there for it. We now have where, I mean, the population now and the employments that you have now in the City of Hollister, this was not, I was not with, never with the City of Hollister, but you have the ability to have people that are on staff throughout different periods and different shifts and stuff like that, and one of the most important things that hasn't been said, and I would think that the attorney, Epperson, would have said it, is you must have the correct translation, because there's a liability that will fall back on the city. Thank you.
I think that's one of the, Chief, are you speaking to?
Yeah, I just got a quick comment to make.
Set it three minutes.
Got it. During, during the tsunami in 2010, a message came across through written transcribe to reverse 911, and that, that message was to expect one-inch water coming back to the shoreline in addition to what we already had. The incorrect translation showed one meter. Everybody that was Spanish-speaking that was listening to that reverse 911 started heading to the hills, from Watsonville to Mount Madonna. Incorrect translation caused that. I agree with Chief Wesick, it needs to be indigenous, it needs to be within the city. I don't have time to wait to try to get ahold of a contractor to translate a message that needs to go out over 911, or on Facebook, or any of our other social media, so the greater population, the greater speaking, the Spanish population could get the word right. Now, if you're concerned about funding, I do know this, the Defense Language Institute in Monterey pays their students for a hundred dollars a month for each language that they know. You can earn up to, I want to say twelve hundred dollars for learning all the romantic languages, which are Italian, Spanish, and Portuguese, and French. So if you're concerned about costs, I get the fiscal responsibility. We only have to deal with one language right now until we get a greater population of multilinguals. But take that into consideration, and I implore you that this is, this is very, very crucial, especially with public safety. Thank you.
Just want to clarify something here, so we're all clear here. There is currently already a bump for those that can speak Spanish. That's already done. So I want to make sure the audience is not confused that we don't want to pay additional dollar amount for those that can translate and do those things. It's very important, and I think everyone here agrees with that portion of it. I think, for me anyways, the conversation is more about moving that four hundred dollars to a written translation. And my point on that was, and I think others made, is how many people, how do we know that, what level they're certified? Because as one speaker mentioned, a mistake there can be very costly to the city. So is it two people, three people, one in the police front? What exactly, I think that's the problem here. What exactly are we talking about, so we know what level it is, and we make sure those that are testing for that level, we get the highest level, because we can't afford to make a mistake. So, again, for clarity, if you can speak Spanish now, additional language, you are getting an extra bump right now. This is more about a conversation for the, paying four hundred dollars to ride it out. And again, what is the standard? Because a mistake there could be an issue.
If I can offer some, oh.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment before the City Manager. Just since I made a comment, just, just, I hope nobody misunderstood what I said. I didn't say a word, anything at all about outsourcing anything. My concern is, even if we do agree to do, to put whatever number we put on it, for the budget purposes, we've gotta have some kind of, some kind of wall on it. We've got to make a good estimate. I do think we have an obligation to the public to, to look at other places and see what they pay. I, I thought I said how important it was that we have this capability, especially when it comes to the portion about verbal, because I think you never can tell when you're gonna have an emergency, and it's really important. And it happens without warning. I think documents are a little different, because documents are more predictable, I think, in the long run. And, and, and we should have some idea of what that is really worth, and maybe we're too low. I don't know what it is. I don't pretend to know what it is. I also would like to see some kind of a, if we're gonna do it, like everything else, we do personnel-wise, it's gonna have a budget impact, and we're gonna have, in the end, we're gonna have to have a number. We're gonna have to say it so much. Now, we're off and off when we get the number. It is not, but we, we got something to work with. So how long do you think it might take you to put something like that together, if you, if you, you know, considering your, your other duties and, and whatever?
Thirty days.
Yeah, we're looking at thirty days.
How long?
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Why don't, would you be willing to commit to, to bring it back in thirty days with that kind of information available?
Yes.
Okay. And, and until that point, which by the way includes more, more employee groups, if I'm understanding it correct, than we have now, until that point, the, the system we have now would continue to be in, working, right?
Correct.
Okay. And, and I understand that we have people out there that are translating documents and probably not getting paid anything more for it than, as if they were, all, all they did was translate verbal communications. I understand that. I think we gotta put, we gotta, we gotta know where it goes, so we can budget it correctly, and determine that it's the right amount of money. And so I would hope the Council would, would agree to bring it back in thirty days, and let, let HR bring it back. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Are you gonna close the public hearing, so I can speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think the public...
No, you still have it open, so we listen to the public, and then I want to speak.
I apologize for...
You give direction before we close the public hearing.
This is not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, it's not a public hearing?
No.
I apologize, and I'd like to comment.
Sure. Sorry, Councilmember Lenore. Just want to make sure we have an understanding, because we keep saying four hundred. I just want to make sure you know it's not four hundred dollars additional for the...
Total.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wasn't on the right page there, but I do want to say this. I think if anybody can give you an insight into this, it's me. Twenty-four years, I answered the phone, and I worked the counter, and I didn't speak Spanish. I can't tell you how valuable, how valuable it is to have people come to your department, like Maria De Leon, when she came. It was the hugest relief for all of us, because how many times do I have to say, un momento por favor, and then I have to go find somebody to help this citizen that I couldn't communicate with. I always felt bad about that, but I didn't know Spanish, so I'd always get somebody fast. But in the old days, we would have to actually do a little conference call, and try to find Cecilia Rodriguez, over there in the finance, to link into the call, to interpret for us. Maria Mendez, they didn't, they weren't on the hill, but they sure gave the services for the, for the bilingual. It was a big plus when we got Abraham Prado in the department. And as I spoke, Ray Ruhlhaus was the translator for the yard. There is a great need. We would do a disservice to our Spanish-speaking community if we didn't provide them the language that they, that they need to hear, their own language. Because can you imagine how it is to be somewhere confused, or needing help, or having an emergency, police, fire, code enforcement, and they can't talk to them? This is not an outsourced thing. This is on-the-job thing. I'll tell you, as far as the cost, I would like to see it equal, you know, one seventy-five and one seventy-five. I could support that at a minimum. But again, for those of you that think the need isn't there, then it needs there. There are residents, and we need to be able to communicate to them, especially in an emergency. I think the city is also saying that it's not gonna be for everybody. It's if the department warrants those, that service, then they would have somebody in their department. It's not gonna be folks that normally don't do translation now. I think it'll just be the same folks that are able to pass the written test. But I, I might even agree, I agree with Marty, a little more information on the neighboring communities, but I could definitely support this request and let you know that it's so needed, so needed. Twenty years ago, still needed today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions from?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay. So as our, I think one of the recommendations was table this for a month?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. If you wouldn't mind, we'd like to go ahead and continue until probably, is it the June third meeting, or June, we'll shoot for June third. We'll try to get the information that the Council has requested. I, I think I'm hearing everybody doesn't, there's no disagreement on how badly the, the service is needed. I would just add that it is interesting, you know, at every department level, there is some technical aspects of that department that can't normally be translated as simple as just a normal translation. And Ms. Councilman Lenore, Councilmember Lenore is correct. I think Brian gave me some information, that thirty-six percent of our population right now considers themselves not speaking English very well. So there is, about a third of us would prefer probably some other form of communication. So we'll put that together for you. We'll bring it back to you with some additional information, and hopefully we can come to a resolution.
May I ask that we table to a date uncertain, so that if more time is needed, we don't have to stick?
Absolutely. That's a, that's a good idea. Sorry.
Can we do it date uncertain?
Yeah, because we're not noticing it. I would only, I would only ask for a date certain if we had a public notice. So it's just a regular item, so.
Okay. And, you know, I just want to stress the point I was making earlier, is that level, it's very important to make sure there's no issues with that translation if it's being written, because again, that's, that's where the issues pop up. So what is that standard to make sure whoever's gonna take the test, we have at that level that can legally stand up for any, any issues? Okay? So can't just be, I'll translate today. It needs to be at a, at a level, taking a test that if there's a legal issue eventually...
Yeah, we'll provide you with, we'll provide you with the firm that would actually do the testing for us. And that's the other good point. I want to make sure is that it's standardized. We had a former councilman that used to get mad at us when we didn't do it correctly. So we want to make sure that who's ever getting this paid, there is a, a standard that's, that's been set. So we'll give you information on them as well.
So there's, the request is for a, a date uncertain at this point?
Well, we'll bring it back.
So is there a motion for, to move this to a date uncertain?
So move?
Thank you.
That's for item two-two-seven?
Uh, yes, all of the items.
And I think that...
Do one, one by one.
I think our city clerk would prefer to have you make that motion on every single item, so that it, for the record. Okay?
That would be starting with two-nineteen dash one-hundred.
I move that we continue this item to a date uncertain.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll move to item three.
Resolution number two-nineteen-one-oh-two, I move that we move it to a date uncertain.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll move to item F-four. Well, you know what, let me, I need to ask if there's any public comments on each of these.
Oh.
Oh.
So on item F-four, is there any public comment?
I have no more speaker cards.
All right, is there a motion?
Item F-four, two-nineteen-one-oh-two, I move that we move it to a date uncertain.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We're gonna move to item F-five. Is there any speaker cards on, on that item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we, I make a motion on two, twenty-nineteen-one-oh-three, that we postpone it for a later date.
Date uncertain?
Okay, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We're gonna move to item F-six. Is there any speaker cards on F-six?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we move resolution number two-nineteen-one-oh-four to a date uncertain.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll move to item F-seven.
I make a motion that we move resolution number two-nineteen-one-oh-five to date uncertain.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, thank you. Let's move to item G-one, from the City Councilmembers regarding their committees. Councilmember Lenore?
I had no committee meetings from the last reporting time.
All right. Councilmember Spencer?
No committee meetings from the last report.
Vice Mayor returns.
No committee meetings from the last report.
Councilmember Sentes?
The only one I had was on five-two-nineteen. We had the Intergovernmental. Let me pull up my notes on that. So we talked about, that we have a, a visit to the TEL Center scheduled on May twenty-third at CSU MB at eleven-thirty, so the Intergovernmental Committee should be attending that. Well, we talked about, this was an exciting conversation, about the actual cost of the schools. The high school superintendent talked about how much it costs to build some of the newer buildings, and he really, I would say, stressed how important it was to include technology. So I think it was talking about the robotics building. Then we had Hollister School District Finance here, and he talked about what the impact, or what it was exactly for them to build a school. So it was nice to get the whole picture. I had brought up, and I think we're gonna agendaize this for the next meeting, how important it was. They had brought this up initially, for them to have a seat at the table. If somebody's gonna come build here, then we'd like for them to meet with the school, and we're gonna try to find a way that we can ensure that the schools are actually considered and they're met with first. We talked about how much it was to build Santana Ranch School. And essentially, what it comes down to is what they said is they're just not given enough money from the state to really build the facilities. So that's why they turned to the community, and the community's been very supportive and very good about helping them. And then there was an update on the 2020 census. That is all I have to report. Thank you.
Okay. I had, my only committee meeting was also Intergovernmental. I just expand on what Councilmember Sentes was saying. The cost, people ask about schools, the cost of a new high school. There's a lot of people asking this question. The cost to build a new high school is about a hundred seventy-five million, between a hundred seventy-five million to two-hundred million dollars. It's a lot of money that can only be paid through a bond through this community. So for everyone understands that. The cost of building a new elementary school, K through eight, is about sixty million. The amount collected from impact fees through state law, can't collect any more, is about fifteen million. So you can see the, the gap there. And the high school and the school district have done an excellent job with the bonds they have issued on doing the improvements here locally. So very proud of what they've done to bring us back up to date, and make our classrooms safe, and bring it up to today's standards. So they've done a great job. But it was, it was very interesting to hear those, those numbers. I know a lot of people think schools aren't very expensive, but they're very expensive, and it's, any new school we build, we're all gonna be paying a, a big price for it. So, thank you for the updates. We're gonna move to informational reports from City Council. Councilmember Lenore?
I do have something to, to report. I had a, I had a tour that I was invited by Christina Chavez Wyatt, who represents the, the one that I know. She does a lot of stuff, but the Samuel County Business Council. I was invited to tour the facility, American Casting. I have to tell you, I enjoyed that tour. The gentleman, I believe he's Vice President, his name is Chris St. John. I arrived to the tour, there, there was other folks there. It was very impressive for the area they're working on. They're actually on the corner there of Fallon and One Fifty-Six, at Fifty-One Fallon Road, but they're proposing a, a big expansion over on Apollo Court, or Apollo Drive there. This company is everything that is great for our community. They're, they make parts, they make knee parts, the front and back of the knee. They make hip parts. They make airplane parts. What they do is they utilize a 3D printer to make the shape, and then they take it to a vat that is coating it, coating it, coating it like a, like a sand, coating it, coating it, coating it. It has to be perfect, has to be perfect. And it's over this 3D thing that they've made of this product, they're gonna, they're making the cast. So they're making the cast, so, and I hope I get this right. So then I, I believe that they then have the metal that it gets poured into the cast that they've made, and then they fire it in this really hot, hot thing, just a furnace, a very, very hot furnace, and, and it cooks, it makes the outside solid, and they pull it out and they break it. And then there's their metal object that they've made, that they made. And it's just an awesome process. I was impressed. The gentleman was very knowledgeable on, on his company. He really represented, if the president will ever hear this, the Vice President did a beautiful job in, in representing the company. And, and these are the employers that are gonna employ local people. I'll tell you that he's looking for employees all the time, and they, they, they offer like a sixteen dollar an hour with some profit sharing, and they have benefits. And the only commitment that they really asked for, you really don't need a lot of experience. Don't necessarily even need to have a diploma, or certainly not a degree. They ask that you just be reliable to show up to the job, because they're a smaller organization, so it's hard, and the city knows this as well. When people are out, it really can domino into an issue for you. So I want to thank American Casting for the wonderful tour, and I also asked him to please invite the other councilmembers out to see what I saw. I think, I think you would enjoy it as well, and I wish them luck in their... I think, I think you would enjoy it as well, and I wish them luck in their, their new building, which is huge. They're gonna be able to bring all their product inside and, and have a better looking facility there than the kind of crap there in the corner. But, uh, I just want to say that I was proud to represent the city, uh, uh, in that business, and I would like to, uh, have other business people in the, in the business park, please call me. I would love to see more facilities, and I was very impressed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Spencer?
Yes, I did a few things. Um, on April twenty-third, I attended the Women's Fund Inspired out at San Juan Oaks. Um, the night was about education, discovery, and finding inspiration, inspiration in the women of our community. The Inspired event embodies who we are as a community and the power of coming together with a shared vision for the future of our community and the women that live here. We had two guest speakers. Um, the keynote speaker was Corinne Warrenchis? Not, probably did not pronounce that right. And the other, uh, community speaker was Dr. Catherine Rose. She brought, uh, students with her from Gablin College who were in the STEM program. These students were female students, and, uh, the reason I say that is because the STEM program is mainly men. Uh, many women do not go into the STEM program. Um, I also attended a special tour of the new science and robotics facility at San Bernardino High School. Very impressed with the direction that, um, SBHS is taking our students. Um, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Tannenbaum for the invitation. Um, I also attended a professional improvement workshop. I'm very grateful that I was given the opportunity to participate in this event. I was given tools on how to become a better leader for our community, and I will be implementing these tools. I would like to give a huge thank you to Rex Osborne for his time and advice. Um, Saturday, I spent some time out at the animal shelter with Hollister PD, Kara and the, the staff and the snip bus. Um, I want to say thank you to all the volunteers. We are so lucky to have these people who go out of their way to take care of our, um, our fur babies. Thank you all for your time and dedication. Um, I also attended the downtown Hollister Beer and Wine Crawl. Don't be laughing. I didn't drink. Um, no, um, it wa, it was a great event. It showcased the his, uh, the historic downtown and the unique businesses that we have in our community. Um, big shout out to, um, HDA, they did a great job. So the next thing, Billy, could you please add an informational item on the next regular agenda to discuss possible term limits for city council and mayor seats? And then I would also, this is for all of us up here, I would like, I would also like to ask the council to participate in the Relay for Life race as a team. And I extend this invitation to the board of supervisors to join us. You got it.
I can do that.
Okay.
And I'm done.
Okay, vice mayor returns?
I'd have to go get a physical before I could. I don't know if I reported out, uh, that as a observer, uh, because it was an ad hoc committee, I could not, I could not, uh, comment, and I follow the rules. As observer, I obtained the, I, I, I attended, excuse me, the flavored tobacco town hall meeting held by the ad hoc committee, consisting of, um, council, council members, Lenore and Spencer. And I, I appreciate, as so many people from the community came out and said their piece. I thought it was a good, uh, a good, uh, meeting, and people said what they meant and meant what they said. And, uh, we got a lot of stuff out on the table, and, um, I want to thank them personally for holding it and allow me to come and sit in the audience. Um, then, uh, the, probably the most important thing during the last two weeks was I got to be one of the judges at the Employee Chili Cook-Off here in, uh, in, um, it's, that was a, a thrill for me. Uh, and, uh, it's my first chili cook-off, um, thing. And as, um, councilmember Spencer mentioned, and it's hard to believe based on what happened today, we all attended a make-nice-nice program together on how we should all get along.
And it didn't work.
So I, I'm sorry if anybody in the audience was offended by what I did, but I'm gonna say something. Perhaps I'm of a different age of people from the age here. I'm older than most of you, I'm seventy-seven. When I grew up, if you got something bad to say about somebody, you said it to their face. That's the way I was raised. Uh, maybe that means I'm not any good on Facebook. I'm not, I don't use some of the terms that people use for defenseless people. I always felt that if you got something to say about, bad about somebody, you say it to their face, in front of them, so they can say it back. Rather than stab them in the back when they can't reply, and then claim you didn't say it because you didn't say it to their face. I'm sorry, I'm too old to change. I'm stuck with what I got. Which is, if I don't like something about you, I'm gonna tell you right to your face so that you can tell me why I'm wrong. I'm not gonna get on Facebook, call you all kinds of insulting names, and then make believe I didn't do it. So I'm sorry that you're stuck with me. I hope you'll forgive my old-fashioned way of doing business. But I come from a Jewish family, and what they, my mother and father used to say is, be a mensch. A mensch is a man. That's not a gender problem. That means you stand up for what you believe in. You don't cut people down behind their back. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Sentes?
All right, I got a few things to report on. Um, I'll try to make it brief, but probably not, sorry. On four twenty-five, it was Thursday, I had the honor and the privilege of going to a San Bernardino County Office of Education who honored employees in our local schools. Uh, there was about thirty-three recipients honored. Honestly, just working in education myself, I know how hard these people work. It was a privilege for me to be able to stand up there and to give these awards and to recognize my teachers, uh, my coworkers, and some of my children's teachers as well. So I, thank you for that. Uh, again, like some of my colleagues pointed out, on four twenty-seven and four twenty-eight, we had a vision and goals workshop. I just want to explain to you guys what happened. Um, on Saturday, each one of us got to meet with a professional who came in here, and he essentially found out what our goals were, what was important to us. And, uh, he was tasked, I would imagine, to find some common ground for us to work on the next day. So Sunday, we had a, a meeting here. A professional came in, like I said, and I think the most important part of that was that, um, well, two things. Number one, we had some goals presented, and we measured them, are they attainable, are they not attainable, et cetera. Uh, one of the goals that I presented that I think was fairly obtainable, that I'd love to see more of, is, uh, professional development and training opportunities, not only for the staff but for the council. I think it'll help us tremendously. Um, and I also want to point out that we can bring in as many consultants as we want, but if we do not implement and practice the ideas that came out of this session, um, they're just not gonna work. On four twenty-nine nineteen, I was invited by Chispa and Jamila to go tour the Sunrise Apartments over off of West Side, in between West Side and Line. Uh, very excited about what's going on over there. There is about, I think, fifty, forty-nine units, because one of them might be a manager unit. I might be not right on that number. But, uh, they're senior citizen housing development, which is desperately needed here. They're gonna have a community center right in the middle. Uh, lots of exciting things going on at that project, and I was honored to be able to go out there and tour it. So looking forward to them opening. On four thirty-two thousand nineteen, I attended over on the West Side on Hakaranda Circle, Dia del Niño. I've been going to this event since I can remember. My daughter's eight years old. And there's a lady over there on that side of town, she lives in Hakaranda, her name is Señora Lazama. They call her Doña Mari. Um, she puts on a bunch of different cultural events, just out of the kindness of her heart. Posadas and other important Mexican cultural events. So I just wanted to, um, thank her for that and give her the recognition that she deserves, and also congratulate her because very recently she received her citizenship, so. I wanted to point that out and publicly thank her. Uh, five one, I attended, along with, uh, councilmember Spencer, the first farmer's market, and then we both briefly stopped in to learn about arts and education at the garden shop. As far as agendizing for the next, uh, meeting, I'd like to find out where are we at with the biker rally? I know that, uh, the city manager recently met with the promoter, so I want to see where we're at with that. And we need to sit down and talk about the moratorium or the growth, whatever you want to call it. Uh, I just think that it's time. This is probably one of the most contentious issues that are out there, or at least that I heard of when I was campaigning. So I'd really like to sit down and talk about that. Billy, do you have any idea of when we can get that on the agenda?
Well, since we're getting along so well, that'll be great. Um, we can, I'm, I'm actually trying to work on something that, um, uh, I, I don't know if that we can all agree on or not agree on, but I'd like to be able to have some, at least talking points for the, uh, council to discuss um, as it relates to, uh, the growth management program kind of in general. Um, I, I don't think it, it will, I could probably do something for you. I wanna, we don't want, we probably want to talk a little bit about it before you go into recess. Um, so if you can give me to maybe the, the, the meeting in June the third, the June third meeting. Um, because remember, I only have like three days in between each meeting to actually get something to you, and I want it to be, I want it to be something that actually is worth talking about. Um, so if I can do it on June third, that'd be, that'd be good for me.
That's fine, I just wanted to secure a date. I think this is a really important issue in our public, and, uh, we need to talk about it, take a position, and then push forward. So thank you for that. Lastly, I just want to say that the public has a right, and the media has a right to interpret or disperse information that they see here any way that they'd like. Uh, we have a right to do the same. I want to remind you of that, whether it be on social media or traditional media, and sometimes things get misquoted or misinterpreted, and I think that's fine. More than anything, I think we have to set a good example to the public. We're elected by them to represent their needs and interests. We're elected because no matter how special interests or lobbyists attempt to spin stories and not see us in office, the people who elected us into office believed in us to do so. We need to abide by the values that we adopted at this workshop, and they're right here, just so you guys know. Listen, respect, honest, accountable, participate, go to the source, and open mind. We adopted these on that Sunday, and the very next day, there's things on social media, and not just from one person sitting up here. So I just wanted to point that out. I think we need to maintain a sense of professionalism and composure when we're up here, and when we're tested by these despicable tactics that took place here today, I have to tell you that when these children left here, I was out there using the restroom, and they said, I told them, "Thank you for coming." They said that was scary. No matter what you say, trauma took place here today, and you can't take back that trauma. If people want to attack us, make illogical claims, exaggeration, or hateful statements, you have to let them do so, whether you like it or not. That is, it comes with the territory of what we signed up for. And I also, lastly, I just want to say that these divisive, despicable tactics that took place, and the people who are speaking of them, it's often more a reflection of themselves than it is about us up here. And I really believe that the public can distinguish between the two. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, please.
A council member, hang on, I'm gonna do my thing here. We don't want to go back to that conversation again. Uh, the promoter for the biker rally happened to come to town, and I did, he did come visit with me. He stopped by to say hello and talk about the rally, and then he came to meet city manager to discuss putting the contract up for a vote, I believe. Is that correct? So he's ready to move forward with the rally if the city would vote for a contract? Is that how that worked out in the end?
Yeah, we, uh, we had given him a, a couple of versions of the last contracts that, uh, we were working on, and he took those back, um, and he was gonna make some, uh, change, amendments or changes, and, um, I haven't seen those yet, but yeah.
Okay, so what, what I'd like to do is make sure we're gonna schedule this early June to vote on this biker rally, so we, again, the more time he has, the more successful.
I think he has, yeah, I think he has a Reno event the first, Chief Westrick, do you know if, if the Reno event is the first weekend in June? He has a small one in June.
We can ask him for the right time.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what his availability is gonna be around then, but yeah.
Let's ask him what date would work in June, so we can meet with them and move forward as far as if we're gonna move forward on a rally or, or not move forward. Because it's, we get ourselves in this situation of the last few months, and we're struggling to make it work, and we, I think we all agree that, that does not work, so. And I'm pleased to hear he's willing to try it again. So that's, that's a great thing to have.
He sounds like he is, yes.
The, I asked several meetings ago to bring up the, uh, an item about VLF funds going into our road fund so that we always have the dollars we need to maintain our roads. Without it, we're never gonna catch up. I understand it's not gonna be a, a one-year deal. It's gonna have to be spread out through many years. But we have to find a way to allocate those dollars into the road fund budget. Otherwise, we're gonna have, uh, issues with our roads in the, in the future as we do right now. So where are we at with that? Is that coming up soon?
Yeah, and it's a little bit trickier than just, I mean, because VLF and property tax, and it's all kind of lumped together now with gas tax, et cetera. So it's, it's, it's not really apples to apples as, as we once maybe thought it was, because we were talking about different strategies of trying to figure out how to actually do something like that. I don't know if Brett has any, if he wants to, to speak on it.
We could talk, I, I'm more than willing to sit with you guys and talk about it, but, you know, for the public to know, vehicle license fees is what we're talking about. We get a percentage from the state, and it's a healthy amount. And we just need to find a way to fund our, our roads, or we're gonna just constantly have problems with that. So it, again, it's not gonna happen over one year. We're gonna have to absorb that over several years. But we need to find a secure way to find funding, because the gas tax does not cover our costs. Nowhere, nowhere near it.
What's that, the VLF, is it a restricted? There's no such thing as VLF.
Okay.
So it's property tax.
It's property tax with vehicle license fees.
But when you collect it, it's supposed to be for roads already. Does it go into the general fund?
Yeah, it's property ta, I mean.
It's a different.
It's a different, it, yeah, VLF doesn't, isn't the same, and we can get really technical on triple flip and all the rest of the stuff, which we don't want to do.
Triple flip is gone now.
Yeah, so, but it's, we collect our money as property tax now. That's, and, and property tax now is just general fund, um, for general fund uses. And I think what the mayor is actually trying to do is, is allocate that general fund dollar and somehow dedicate that to actual road projects in some sort of relationship to what we used to get in VLF monies.
Okay.
And it's, it's, so, there's, it's a, it's tricky.
Or like the whole council that has the benefit or the majority?
Yeah, no, that's absolutely, and that's what we were trying to do with Brett.
The other item, as mentioned earlier, I, I request was, how do we get to a point of a moratorium as far as processing applications, as councilmember Sentes brought up? It's a very important conversation to be having with this community. And it doesn't mean we're stopping building. We can't stop what's been approved. We're just a breather so that we can go through our process and figure out what works and what does not work, so we don't just keep approving projects that end up costing us more, more dollars down the road. So I want to make sure we're, we're working on that.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I, and that's why I was trying to, to sort of respond to councilman Sentes, is, is that, um, there is sort of an idea, I don't know how legal the idea is, is, but just, um, obviously, you know, I don't like to use the word moratorium, because the, the building, or the maps that you have entitled right now are moving forward, but if there's another mechanism to, on applications or something along those lines, we were, we were trying to look on, at what's possible there.
We need to have the conversation here. The other part of growth, one thing we're not doing is the affordable housing component of the new developments, putting in the requirement, which I think, you know, in the past it's been fifteen percent. I think we need to have a conversation about implementing a twenty percent affordable housing element to it. If we can have that conversation.
And I think that, that was another one of the, the council's goals, about putting together an inclusionary housing ordinance. Um, and, and that's, that's a, a much longer conversation, I think. What you're gonna end up finding is, is that, are those houses actually resale restricted or rental restricted? Um, and if they are. And if they are, then you're monitoring those. I mean, it's... Or is... Are you going to have an in-luf fee, and what determines what size a project is? I mean, those are some huge discussions that you're going to end up going down, and I think those are, at the same time, I think if I was ordering the things in some sort of a priority, I would say, if you want your growth management ordinance done and certified, and you want your inclusionary housing ordinance, and then your general plan, I think those are kind of... That's kind of the order you want to try to get that at, and then... But be prepared for long... Long meetings on those items.
Well, I've been prepared, and the public's prepared. This is something, you know, I've been talking about for a few years now, so it's... We need to have the conversation. Whether it passes or not, it needs to be had. The other item, which some of the members here spoke about, our speaker over that weekend, one of the most important things I came away with, with that goal envisioning setting, was something that we're doing, and he pointed out, we're doing wrong here, and it's creating a major stress on our staff and our city, and it's going to cause us to fail. That is this idea of having that third meeting. As he pointed out, all you're doing is creating a situation where staff can't even catch up to implement what you discussed, so everybody starts falling behind. I felt that way from the beginning on this. I think staff needs the time to do things right. We need the time to research and do the things we need to do on it, and I think it's a conversation we should be having, because I don't think this third meeting really in the end of it's helping us. If we need to put more time on one of our meetings, we can. We did it for several years before, and it's always seemed to work. So, I think we should have that discussion again, rather than continue down this path of the third meeting at the end of the month. And that's all I have. Okay. So, city manager?
Well, with that said, would... Do you want something on the next agenda with council's consensus to put something on to discuss the third meeting?
Yeah, I'd like the council to discuss it.
Or the fourth meeting? Okay. We can more or less mimic what we put on a few months ago? Yeah.
Be honest about the impact it's had. Do you find it working for you or not working for you, and so on?
Okay. And then, the other question was regarding the dog park. It is a CIP project. I spoke to Mike. I think we're going to get ready to do that in the next couple of months, so it should be completed over the summer months. It's really just a re-turfing and new sprinkler system, so that should be a pretty quick project. I don't know if anybody's been over to the McCarthy Park area. If you haven't, please go by there. It's actually turning out to be a really cool, super little... Cool little park. So, we are getting... We are a little... We do have... We've encountered some delays, sorry, but we hope to be open around the first part of July, so... Okay?
Yeah, I've driven by it every week.
Yeah. No, it's a pretty impressive little place.
Go two weeks to therapy right there, and just get the bottle and boom, right along.
It's very cool.
What a great addition to the community.
And I don't necessarily want to bring up what happened earlier, and I don't want to add to this fire, but I would say this, is that elected officials sometimes do sign up for what they get in the newspaper. Staff does not. Okay? Staff comes here to work for you every single day. They actually deserve to be treated with respect.
I think everyone...
And I agree. Thank you.
City attorney?
No statement, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Chief?
Hey, thanks a lot. Three things, Mr. Mayor, council. We did have the SNP event this weekend at the Holister Shelter. It was fantastic. In fact, I think totality for the weekend was 62 animals were spayed and neutered through both events actually that were done. One of the things I thought was really cool was the vet actually did a tour of the facility during the event and said it was the finest facility he's ever seen his entire time he's been with SNPs. That was... Pretty proud of us, pretty happy with all the work that staff did down there. Second thing, if you are interested in the Relay for Life, there's a thing called Run with the Chief on Saturday. So, if you want to run with the chief on Saturday of Relay for Life, you are welcome to do that.
You don't have to be very fast.
No, that's for sure. No, you can actually walk with the chief if you want.
How far?
I do... I tried to do 5K. And then, then one more advertisement. June 11th is the Law Enforcement Torch Run. It'll be throughout the entire county, starting at the fairgrounds. It'll end at the PD. The PD's route starts, I think, around 10-ish or so, 9:45, 10 o'clock, at the courthouse. Anybody can do it. It costs 25 bucks to run with us. It all goes to Special Olympics. It's a really good way to show your support for these special folks that... Also, we're doing an anti-bullying program as well this year for the very first time. I'm hoping to be at the Summer Games this year myself. I'll drive up to UC Davis just to witness that myself this year. Anyway, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. City clerk?
I wanted to say thank you to council, city manager, and the two staff that actually attended the Sunday training, and thank you all for doing the Saturday training. I know it took a whole weekend out of your lives, and I appreciate your efforts in doing that. And then, after that, I just want to do a little update. The Chamber of Commerce is doing a business after hours on May 8th. I do believe you need to RSVP, and that's going to be at emergency vehicle specialists. And just a reminder that the farmer's market started this last week, and please be sure to go down and visit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Item G3, I believe that's been...
That was pulled. I received an email from Mark Adato from Monterey Bay Community Power, and unfortunately, due to staffing issues, they would not... We're not unable to present their update to us this Monday, but would like to... So, if I could withdraw that, they would like to place that at a later time.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this slide?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so you'll bring it forward at a different time. Thank you. Item two, we'll go to item G4. I'm going to recuse myself from this item, since I own the property next door. I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice mayor.
Item number G4 is setting appeal hearing, a planning commission approval of a minor subdivision, number 2019-1, conditional use permit 2018-14 for a planned unit development tentative map in the DMU downtown mix zoning district located near the southwest corner of the intersection of 4th Street, San Bernardino Street, further identified as San Bernardino County Assessor partial numbers 054-110-036, 054-110-016, and 054-110-030, known commonly as the 400 block.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Members of the city council, good evening. Abraham Prado with the Development Services Planning Division, planning manager. As you mentioned, Mr. Vice Mayor, tonight, well, just to recap, at a special meeting of the planning commission of April 11th, 2019, the planning commission approved minor subdivision 2019-1, conditional use permit 2018-14 for a planned unit development, and tentative map number 2019-1 for the property known as the 400 block. A request to appeal the action of the planning commission was submitted within the 15-day appeal period. The item before you is a request to set an appeal hearing for the date certain of May 20th, 2019, which is the next regular city council meeting, and at this time, the request is for the council to approve that meeting date. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions for staff?
Comments? Comments?
Anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we set this appeal hearing for May 20th, September.
And the time will be at 6:30 or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard. Second?
Yes. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Item is approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you let the mayor know he can come back in? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to item G5?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Brian Swanson. I serve as the Development Services Director for the city. The city council reviewed a draft MOU between the city and the San Bernardino County Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau on April 15th. There was consensus that the city council would support assisting the chamber with $50,000 per year, with an additional $2,500 for the Pinnacle Gateways partner... Partnership. Staff was directed to bring back more information on the cost for the marketing strategy plan in terms of... In the terms and conditions, number one, of the MOU and the costs for the promotional package. The chamber, the San Juan Committee, and the community foundation for San Bernardino County have solicited requests for a proposal from three marketing firms to develop a five-year marketing plan. The nonprofits have agreed to fund the plan. The following changes to the terms and conditions are as follows, to items 1, 2, 3, and 13. The first change, modified to reflect that the nonprofits will procure and fund a qualified professional to develop a five-year marketing plan. Second change, goal setting has been modified to require a stakeholder meeting with representatives of nonprofit organizations related to tourism and economic development, local city councils, and the board of supervisors, and the executive management or their designee from the three jurisdictions in the county. The purpose of the meeting will be to prioritize one-year, three-year, and five-year goals for implementing... For implementation and funding. The city council will agree to consider requests to fund implementation of the five-year marketing plan. Next change, which is an important one, webpage, social media. There will be a use of marketing matrix. Will be added with the requirement to report the success of the matrix to the chamber board. And the final change would be an annual retreat. Requires an ad hoc city council member to attend an annual retreat with the chamber board to review expenditure and funds and progress with implementation of the marketing plan. Staff recommends that the city council receive the report, review the changes to the draft MOU, and direct staff to return with the resolution to adopt the MOU with the chamber and approve the supplemental appropriations.
Any questions from council? So, I'm... Just so I'm clear, so when we talked about the $50,000 first, make sure they're covered so they can keep operating. Are we trying to combine it all? Is that what you're saying, or how are we doing this? So, I'm clear on this.
As far as the initial...
Yeah, so they have their... One of the things we found out, they weren't being funded as the HCA is being funded. So, the $50,000, is that... We can do that separately, so they make sure we have those dollars there?
Yeah, there'll be an annual payment of $50,000 a year, plus the $2,500 for the Visitors Bureau.
Right.
And then, if the chamber has programs or other things, projects that they want to implement, they would come back to the council to ask for those multi-year type projects, so if you...
As we did in the past?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Yeah. Councilmember Resendez?
I'm just concerned, or I'm wondering, if we can get some business owners, not just the nonprofits, on the board. So, it says, modify to reflect that the nonprofits will procure a funded and qualified professional to develop a five-year marketing plan. Can we just add business owners? Can we get some local business owners on there as well, not necessarily just nonprofits? I have a concern that it's always the same people putting out the same product, you're going to get the same result. I would love to see some of these new, up-and-coming business owners involved in that process. That's just my concern on both 1 and 2. Thank you.
It's a good point, and if the council decides, it'd be good to have representation from the county, the city, and San Juan Batista.
I was going to point that out, too. You can't... You know, the partnership with the county on this is going to be so important in San Juan Batista, because together is what makes our community attractive, so their participation is vital to make this thing work. Do you have any other... In the planning process? Okay, any other questions? Comments? Do we have any speaker cards? Do you have a direction on that? The clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move to item G6. The appointments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
At the April 25th, 2019, regular city council meeting, during Recreation Manager Tina Garza's report, council requested that a council member liaison be given to Recreation. So, I brought this back for you to appoint a council member liaison for Recreation and added other departments that don't have a council member liaison. I believe there's three others in addition to Recreation. One is Management Services, which entails Airport and Public Works. The other is the IT Department and the City Clerk's Office.
What page is that, those on?
Page 5 of 7. Oh, 411. Packet 11. Or packet...
Page 411?
411. So, there's Management Services, Recreation, Information Systems, and City Clerk that do not have liaisons.
Okay, so, for Recreation, I'd like to appoint Councilmember Resendez. For Management Services, I'd like to appoint Councilmember Lenore. And for the Technology, was it the next one?
Information.
IT. Councilmember Spencer.
City clerk.
City clerk. Vice Mayor Richmond. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, for Recreation, it was?
Councilmember Resendez?
And then, Management Services was Lenore.
Councilmember Lenore.
IT.
Councilmember Spencer.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Hi, Marty.
Do we have to make a motion on that?
No, it's a consensus. On out of H, I, J, and K, there is no business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.[1704.87]